At this time, I will call to the open session of the August Committee for the whole meeting to order. As most of you know, we always begin our formal Board of Education meeting with a moment of silence. We usually do not do that at a committee meeting. Tonight, however, I will ask everyone to join the board in a moment of silence to reflect on the recent tragedies. Please remember the families affected by the recent shootings and also the staff of Mooresville High School and the families involved for the tragic loss of one or two students over the weekend. Please join this board in a moment of silence. At this time, I'd remind our guests, this is a committee meeting. This meeting is designed for the board to gather and discuss the information that's important to the operation of the school system. Some information and discussion will be a precursor to policy, budgetary, and operational concerns that may require board action at the more formal Board of Education meeting on the second Monday of each month. Some information and presentations are more information-based and may not require any later action. By nature, this informal meeting will result in some brainstorming and discussion and more open conversation than the formal BOE meeting. Please do not take our wishes, wants, and comments as board action. We do not allow public comment at this action. Mr. Johnson, board members, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Board members, as you noticed, we're without an attorney tonight. Clark, Clark's wife had a baby girl this morning. So congratulations to him. And so I believe that's a good enough reason to excuse him today. Bless his heart. So it's my recommendation that we postpone any closed session discussions until next week while we'll have an attorney. Is any objection to that, board members? Okay. So we will just not go into closed session. I've spoken with Kenny, Mr. Johnson, everybody. There's nothing that would seem to be pressing that we would need to discuss. Board members, any changes to the agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, sir.
I got a motion, second, approve the agenda as is. Any discussion? On my favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Very good, agenda is approved. At this time, we'll hear from Todd Williams, Director of CTE Education.
Good evening, everyone. I'm personally, I'd like to say that I appreciate all your condolences and your sharing the love of my pastor and my father and appreciate all the cards and letters I got too. So I really appreciate that. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Robert Filter, who's a guest tonight, really here to support me. He's our Southwest Regional Coordinator from DPI, and he's formerly the Director of Union County. So we've become good friends and Robert does a great job. Thank you for being here today. And now I'd like to share with you or invite Dr. Ed Schaefer up. And you all know Dr. Schaefer. He's been working with us since December, actually, on a CTE program review. It's a five-year strategic plan that he's going to present tonight. And Ed comes with us, he lives in Southport, North Carolina. He comes from Syracuse, New York, where he's had over 40 years of experience dealing with CTE and EC programming. So Ed formed, after he retired, he couldn't stop working and he formed his own company. And that's what he's doing now, is doing some review of CTE programs all across the eastern coast now, it seems, going to Florida. But his company is Educational Advisors and Support LLC. And so with that, Ed, thank you for being here and presenting.
Thanks, Todd. This is the first time I've seen Todd in tie. He said that when he worked in Union County, he had to wear one all the time.
Probably in Wilkes-Barre.
Yeah, but apparently it's... Well, look, first of all, that slide's wrong. Today's really August 5th. Originally, we were going to do it on June 3rd, but things got delayed and whatnot. First of all, I want to say that I had a great time here in Statesville and Iredell County. I worked with, you know, a really great team of people, if I can get this thing going here. Can you move it? Okay. There's your Career and Technical Education Task Force. And this was a Casablanca effect. You rounded up all the usual suspects. And you've got post-secondary people here, lots of your staff. Brady was part of this. Some board members were part of it. We had people from the county, commissioners. And I think we started a little slow because it was trying to get people to understand a little bit about CTE and some of the basics of it, make sure everybody was on the same plane. But as we moved along, we had some pretty healthy discussions about where CTE in Iredell State should ought to go. And you have, I think you got in your package, a piece that was called "The Resource Guide." And can you move this slide? And here's, here's all the work that got done. You know, we're going to spend about a half an hour tonight on this, but there really is a lot of time and energy, not only on my part, but the part of your school administrators, teachers, the task force involved in this thing. We had four meetings. I was here several times, visited all your schools, including your early colleges, and met with your high school and middle school principals. And we got down to the point where we had a draft and then we worked with it. And one of the nice things about this was all of the task force members who were present at the last meeting, I asked for nods. You know, are you signed on? Do you believe this is the right thing for your school district? And they agreed. And I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that was without dissent. Here are some things that we worked from, and I called them Guiding Principles for CTE and Iredell Schools. And the first thing was we want your completers to be career and continuing college, to be really ready for further education. And it doesn't matter whether you go to work, or whether you're an apprentice, or whether you go to college and then go to work, or you go in the military, you're going to be expected to learn more stuff. The largest employer trainer in the world is Walmart. You go to work for Walmart, they train you. And they expect you to learn things and to do your job with some competency. And that usually involves math and reading skills and other things. Students prepared for college success without a need for participation in developmental courses when they get to college. It's not a significant problem here, but you do have kids who get to Mitchell and they are not ready and they have to participate in some developmental work. So that's one of those guiding pieces. Periodic review of IS CTE programs will be required to determine those programs that need closure, enhancement, or development. Your programs need to be dynamic. You need to be constantly looking at them. CTE programs will be aligned with the economic development and workforce needs of the southwest North Carolina region. And we crosswalked your programs to those employment needs. And I believe earlier in the year, you got a full report. And in the back of that report is about five or six pages of that crosswalk. What you offer, what those needs are, and, you know, what you ought to focus in on. And we'll go through that in a minute. And then there was the idea of what should the kids look like when they leave school here in Iredell County? And there were these six points. You want them to have the academic ability to persist and succeed in post-secondary education, whatever that is, including Walmart training. You want them to have earning power. And that means an industry-approved entry-level certificate or license. And that is a certificate that demonstrates that those young people have technical skills to do the work that an employer might seek to have them do. Work-based learning experience from among paid and non-paid experiences, so they really understand what that work environment is going to be like when they get out there in it. Career-ready practices embedded in a employability profile. Can they do those soft skills? Can they work in a group? Can they think squarely about things? Are they problem solvers? Can they get along with people? And those are the things that if kids don't have intact, that will cost them the job. Employers will invite them to leave if they don't do that well. And then a defined career pathway plan. What's the next step? Where are you trying to go? You know, and plans can change, but you're not going to go anywhere if you don't have one. And then finally, earned advanced standing or dual credit at a post-secondary institution. Here are some policy questions that I would suggest you might want to keep in mind, based on the work that we did and some of the research that I did in the district. First of all, what's your relationship with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction? I think it's really great that Robert's here tonight and can see that you have an interest and a real desire to see improvement in your programs. Second, are the Perkins and state minimums sufficient for student success? Are you satisfied with minimums? That's a real, that's a real important question. Because the state lays out those minimums, but do you want your kids to get more and receive more? Is there an effective use of time? You have 11- and 12-month employees. Are you getting the best benefit from them? Are you willing to think about as a way to create more time so kids can master the skills and whatnot that they need to be career-ready? Year-round school or competency-based assessments and testing kids at the time they're ready as opposed to waiting to a kind of a culminating assessment? Are you fully integrating CTE into the fabric of your schools and capitalizing on the academic learning that's embedded in CTE? If you go in and see a great CTE program, you're going to see teachers doing a lot of things that imply and require kids to demonstrate that they have mastered academic skills, reading, writing, math, science. Do academic teachers have an understanding of the modern workplace and how their content is used in those workplaces? Is their alignment of the programs a study with workforce and economic development needs? Something I believe you should monitor. And is there sufficient investments in student support service, professional development, and administrative support? Some of those questions, hopefully, we're going to address. The plan you have in front of you, and if you go into that resource guide, I would refer you to the back of the plan, the last three pages, which are the goals and the strategies that your task force has endorsed. The first one is school and program redesign. Some things we suggested and the committee, the task force focused on that need to be changed or thought about. Programs a study. We've got some thoughts on those. Standards. What are the program standards? What are the common things that must be meant within the program to make sure they meet a standard of quality? Partnerships, where, by the way, I think you've really, you've really got some really nice things going, your IBET and whatnot. There's a lot of involvement with your partners, both business, post-secondary, and whatnot. And then you have some infrastructure needs that were also discussed, and we can hit upon those. So let's take a look at the school and program design. The Career Academy and Technical School. Lot of, lot of questions about the program here. You've got some programs that are, that are functioning very, very well. Nursing program and some other automotive, of course. But you also have some programs that have been added here that struggle for enrollment. And is that really what you want to do here? How can it be structured? And what your committee had recommended, and I would refer you to the first strategy and goal one, is to convert CATS to a full-day, 9-12, early college high school in conjunction with the community college. And the business partners using a proven CTE design. And there are some, those are the ones that are mentioned, there are Link Learning and SREB, the Southern Regional Education Board, high schools at work, or tech centers that work. Those are national models that have proven successful elsewhere. Need for teachers. Not only are you, as a district, looking for regular elementary, secondary teachers, particularly in foreign languages and math and science and some other places, Todd is struggling to get teachers for CTE. So we're recommending, the committee, the task force is recommending a district-wide senior forum in education. And you've got a cadet program that's available to you across the state, and maybe a renewed effort on that, and maybe some determination to recruit some kids into that. Teaching's a great career. Being an educator is a wonderful thing. And I think maybe some of what's happened across the country relative to teaching is creating a renewed interest in making it fully a profession, and hopefully, kids can glom onto that. The third item up there is Statesville High School. And I'm not going to go chapter and verse, you know more about Statesville High School than I probably ever will, but, you know, you, there are challenges there. And I believe you've taken some actions to talk about converting that to an IB school. I think the task force position on that would be make sure that CTE is part of that effort. And there's a career IB program that ought to be thought about as an additional piece in that school as you try to make that a higher-performing school. Your high schools. You've got a lot going on in the high schools. There's a lot of programs, some we'll talk about in a minute, that are challenged. And the task force recommendation is that each high school in the district should have a couple of focus programs, that they really, you know, they really glom onto those programs. And that, you open those programs up to kids from other parts of the district. And I know you get transportation problems and all of that. I was a superintendent. Believe me, I understand these things. But in addition to that, there should be a core of some other CTE programs. So rather than trying to do everything in that school, do a couple of things particularly well, supported by three or four other kinds of pathways that would be particular and would be interested for those students in that school. Co-located programs. And this has been successful in other parts of the state, other parts of the country, really, where CTE programs are located in a business. And you've got issues with, you know, how old the kids got to be, compensation laws, all of that. Other people have worked through those and been successful. And the kids get to really see what it's like if they're in like an automobile dealer's shop and are watching that work go on, and get a chance to be mentored by those people that do that work. And middle-level CTE. You have got a STEM program in the middle schools that about 60% of your kids get. And the tension against that is your arts program, chorus, music, instruments, and all of that. Somehow, some thought has to be given so that every middle school kid gets exposure to CTE. Because at some point in their life, they're going to have to go to work to sustain themselves and a family and pay some taxes and do all of the things that we expect. And that exposure piece at middle level is important. And in the full report, again, that you said earlier, there are some elements to that programming that that really needs to be considered. Increased technician certifications in the health sciences. You've got technical stuff, you've got veterinary science, for example, where the kids get that assistance. We're going to, or the task force is going to recommend that you think about some other health science, technical programs. And those are laid out in the, in the report, the full report as well. And the role of your early colleges. Your early colleges are really doing pretty well. And there's a lot of passion there, not only on the part of the leadership and the teaching staff, but also on the part of the kids. I would encourage you to make sure that those programs are aligned with the career kind of moniker that they have. If it's for ag, make sure it's for ag. And the one at the community college at Mitchell works really well because the kids can just dive into a variety of courses without a transportation piece. So, and transportation kept coming up a lot. Programs a study. One of the things that I encountered here as I was talking with people is that there are a lot of people that are interested in CTE and making sure that kids get good technical training. A lot of ideas are flowing in. The question about those ideas is, do they line up with the employment needs of the region and the economic development stuff of the region? Are there other ways to do it? Are those programs something that you should just automatically do? And what's, the task force has recommended that there ought to be a protocol endorsed by the board that lays out how a program of study gets decided to be delivered. It shouldn't be just up to one individual. There should be principals involved in that. Todd, obviously, you should be involved to make sure that that meets all of those policy questions that you asked earlier, that I asked you to think about earlier. Alignment with the regional economic development workforce needs. And those needs are going to change over time. And the encouragement here is that you continually, continue to monitor that, and more particularly that your IBET committee, that the business and post-secondary advisory group continue to monitor that as well. Credible credentials. You award about 2,700 credentials to kids. 1,700 of those credentials are either work keys, what's the other outfit that does the...
The career management class.
Yeah, well, no, not that. The other test that the states ask you to do.
Work keys and that's it.
Yeah. And also, a lot of kids who are getting involved in, and testing in the Office Suite, Word, Excel, and whatnot. But you have very, very few kids who are actually getting a technical certification that demonstrates work skills. And very few of your kids, there's a tiered system through DPI, 1, 2, and 3. You've got a lot of kids getting 1s out of that remaining about 1,000 kids. And you have very few kids getting those more difficult-to-master credentials at level, at Tier 2 and Tier 3. Encouraging, the task force encouraging that, that focus be on those more difficult credentials and preparing kids to be successful in them. Explicit coherent sequential programs of study. Right now, kid can take four courses. They can add an enhancement course. Sometimes, when you try to match those enhancement courses up with the career direction or the cluster that the kid is participating in, it's very difficult to see the relationship. So we're asking the district to consider that there be very explicit coherent sequential programs of study, that you can present to kids, to business, to families, and say, if you want to be certified in a particular technical field, here are the courses you must take, and here is the test you must attempt to be successful at. And the enhancement courses and the dual, and the controlled grazing are, it's an interesting High school should be a time to explore, but you also ought to get out of high school with something. So how do you get the right balance? How do you let kids explore, but also make sure that they leave the school completing a sequence, being a completer, and raise your level of CTE completions, which is one of the things that needs to happen? And our belief, the task force belief, was that we needed to slenderize the amount of programs that we offered. And it starts with doing these sequential programs of study. Here are the programs we want to offer. Here are the courses it takes to complete those. And then if there are kids who want to test the waters, they can test from those courses, not just anything. Dual credit. Doing a good job with this. There is dual credit that, through the community college, and you have a lot of kids who are testing that. And then interactions with DPI. And I don't want to create a civil war, but there are things that you might think are best for your kids. And you, as a policymaking group, need to decide whether or not that's worth combat with the DPI and say, we really would like to do this. And can we get some flexibility to do it? And that was a real topic of conversation, particularly from the county commissioners that were there, working with us. So let's go to the standards. Let's not, let's do this. In that, in the review, the piece that we provided to you, there's a IS Program of Study, Priorities Recommended Build Out and Alignment. And if you look up here, you'll see that there are some, well, let's, let's look at, let's look at the paper copy because it's really not coming up there. There are 10 recommendations here that are aligned with your workforce piece. And let's do this. First, expanded. You see a column there that says expand. Information technologies. You are very, very light in the information technologies, and that is one of the highest demand fields, particularly in your region, but across the country. And some things that ought to be explored, visualization and analytics, cybersecurity, networking. You do not have a networking course. And I train any kids to network computers. Telecommunications, program and software... Telecommunications, program and software development, and geospatial technologies. And there are high schools across the country that are doing these programs. There are places to go and grab curriculum and grab insights in how to pull those off.
How many kids do we have involved in information technology?
I couldn't tell you, Todd, to remember right off.
Out of the twenty-seven, you say like twenty-seven-hundred?
Test takers. You've got almost five thousand kids that are taking at least one course.
You remember, you wanna know how many completers we have in that?
Well, no, I'm just, I mean, you say like program and expand, I just wanted to.
Yeah, we started last year with some AP computer science classes. I would put those in the program and software development category.
Sure.
And Robert can attest to this, just in July, DPI is gonna be piloting some cybersecurity classes coming up, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So, I mean, that would be something that we could add and have this quickened.
Yeah.
We don't have many completers in that area, I'll tell you that.
If you look under the consolidation, there's two there, the advanced manufacturing. One of the areas that is in demand in the region is this optoelectronics, which is light. And there's a big need for that, and so that element, and you really need to work with Mitchell on that, because a lot of those kids that go through the advanced manufacturing are going to Mitchell, getting the Megatronics and other stuff. So, that needs to be thought through. Your engineering program, you've got some engineering courses, and you've got some courses that are titled engineering, but aren't necessarily designed to produce and engineer. You've got some kids here in Statesville that would make great engineers, and a pathway for them to really have a rigorous program of study that will help them to get into engineering school and give them a head start against the other kids. I have a nephew that went through Project Lead the Way, and he went off in aerospace to the University of Michigan, and he said, Uncle Ed, I was so far ahead of these other kids because I had Project Lead the Way. So, and then there's another one, EBD, which is engineering by design.
That's the only one?
Yeah, yeah. So, being real thoughtful about that. And then, number four, where is old number four?
The Stroud's class.
Yeah, yeah. You're not producing any carpenters. You're not producing anybody to do the heating and ventilation, you know? Who's gonna fix this air conditioning system ten years, fifteen years from now when it needs help? And there's no plumbing. So, a real focus in those, that area is, there's a demand, those are good jobs, usually with some benefits, and you ought to be thinking about that. Five is this biomedical stuff. This was a high-demand piece on the regional economic development piece. And then, health information technology. Health services, particularly in this area with Charlotte and all of that, is a big deal. And business analytics, logistics, senior forum in education, that's to address the need for teachers, and designer crafts, which are really related to producing high-end furniture and clothing. That is part of the history of North Carolina and something that needs to be continued. I won't go through the bottom. It's basically, there's some things I think you ought to stand pat on. Your law and public safety program that's offered here. AV, arts and technology, the hospitality and tourism, which really is primarily your culinary program. And your automotive, of course. Your automotive, by the way, is world-class. I've seen a lot of automotive labs and programs, and that is a hit, that's a real good thing. And then, there's eleven of them there that I think you ought to consider, or the committee thinks you ought to consider, program of study or cluster development. And then, we've talked about the credentials. I'm wasting, I'm way over time here. Other priorities in this whole programs of study piece. The clusters that are in need of review. It's really hard to come to an agricultural area and say to you, you really need to, this really needs to be rethought. The kids who don't complete the ag program have to take the state test. Fifty-eight percent of those kids pass that test.
That's our district, or that's?
That's your district.
So, only fifty-eight percent of the?
Of the kids who are not completers.
That was seventeen, eighteen down the road, did you mention that?
Yeah. And so, I don't know what this year's data is, but at any rate.
Four percent of our people complete or pass.
Well, they've passed one of the technical exams.
Okay.
Okay? Which, I would say earlier, not as challenging as you might like.
Seventy-three percent for this past year, seventy-one for seventeen, eighteen.
So, there's a bifurcation there.
We haven't got the official numbers yet from DPI. We hadn't, you know, Robert, how long, we usually get down February, usually.
The goal is October, November this year. You also have to realize that in a lot of cases, our children, our students take a class or two, and ag seems to be one that, especially northwest, that they like to take. You know, so they're not completers, but they're, you know, they gotta go somewhere, I guess, is what I'm saying. But I understand where you're coming from.
They're not doing very well on the tests, and that's, I just think that's something I certainly recommended to the task force needed to be looked at when we started mucking around in the data. We talked about your middle-school STEM academies and making sure that every kid has an opportunity to take CTE in middle school. Your at-risk students, there's some recommendations in the full report to be a little more thoughtful about the supports that at-risk students get. You've got some good stuff that you're doing with your kids that are truly disabled, you know, have real disabilities. Some of your mildly handicapped kids may not be getting the necessary support in their CTE program that you might like. Pre-K through five experiences. You know, you gotta learn about who the community workers are sometime before you get to middle school, and the task force thinks you ought to look at that. The ships, the ships are these, internships, mentorships, externships, help me, internships. And you've got a work-based learning coordinator. She shares some duties here. You don't have as many opportunities for kids to get out into the workplace and see it as might necessarily be done. And within your budget, you might wanna be thinking about, can we do more there? Career and technical student organizations, kinda spotty. Some places, you're in great shape, you've got teachers that are involved, they're doing stuff. Other places, because no one has stepped forward to take responsibility, kids don't have access to that. Those are really important add-ons to your CTE program. That's where the kids get the competition pieces. That's where the kids learn the public speaking pieces. And the recommendation in the full report was to pay those advisors so that you have them. Credible credentials, we've talked about that. You need to really make sure kids have an opportunity to get a credential that gives them the technical skills that they can demonstrate to an employer. Let's move along. Standards, very quickly. Consideration of academy models is something that needs to be done. Kids complete with four courses. Some of those technical exams that you might ask kids to take require more time to do that. So, in that explicit program of study, you may be adding a fifth or a sixth course. And that's gonna challenge your schedules and the way that works. But you really want the kids to get the credential, but they also have to have the time to master the skills so they can be successful in it. Absence of academic and CTE integration. Your academic teachers do not work very closely with your CTE teachers, and they both have things to learn from each other. The CTE teachers about how to, the support that they need to do the academic skill support in their program, not to turn them into math teacher, but a CTE teacher of math. And likewise, the academic teachers need to learn where those skills are valuable once the kids leave school and go to work. Developmental courses in the post-secondary programs. The high school principals do not have a good handle on how many of their kids are going to a post-secondary program and not being successful in getting into a regular credit-bearing course. They have to go through a developmental program first. I really think your high school principals ought to know about that and then help build programs in the high school to support those kids so they're ready to go. Professional development. This is a weak spot. Your CTE teachers do not get a lot of ongoing professional development. And developing, the recommendation here is really that there needs to be a plan for professional development for the teachers. We talked about the work-based learning, I won't belabor that. Career planning. Kids are leaving the high school, and they get their diploma, but they, because they had a graduation plan and that got them to the stage. But they don't have a plan that says, where am I going next, and how am I gonna get there? And what, where do I need to go? What courses do I need to pursue? What do I need to explore to be ready to go to work? And then, low wages versus available jobs. For example, recommendation was to continue the culinary program. Unless you're really into management, there aren't a lot of great, high-paying culinary jobs. So, but, there's deep interest in it, kids get saved by it, no question about that. So, making sure that when you approve a program of study, or it is offered to your kids, that there's some other underlying foundation for doing it, particularly if it's a low-wage direction. Now, you're graduating a lot of CNAs, but those kids get access to the licensed practical nursing program, some of those kids are gonna go off to RN programs. So, there's a clear pathway there for a higher wage for those kids. Your partnerships with IBET, the Statesville Chamber, you've got economic development partners, Mitchell Community College, I think the commissioners are committed, and you've got some others that are involved. And building those out are really gonna be important for the district going forward. And the last one here is infrastructure. And you've got work to do on your facilities, you're doing some things. I understand that there's gonna be some work on it, hopefully at Statesville. You've got some work to do here in your outbuildings, your diesel program, welding program. Those facilities need to be enhanced. Transportation. You've got kids who don't come to CATs because the transportation system doesn't work for And if you're going to expand and make optional those choice programs in the local high schools, then some thought has to go into transportation. It's a big-ticket item, it's a complicated process, and you're balancing that off against transporting a lot of disabled kids and all of that. So, it's, the task force recognizes that, but working on the transportation piece is important. We also, the task force also recommending that you do a comprehensive review of your facilities for the programs of study that you wanna offer. Do the programs of study, analyze the facilities, make the corrections or the additions that you need. Each school has student support services that meet national standards. Your counseling services are not at national standards. And no one's more acutely aware of the budget problems that you and others in the state have, but if you're really gonna support kids well and help them develop that career path that you want them to have and to leave, ready to go to work or to be successful at the next level of education, that counseling support needs to be there. And you've got some other things involved there, too. You've got some college counselors and whatnot, but that really needs to be looked at. Administrative support. You've got a single director, you've got a five-thousand-kid program, and he needs a little help, folks, and not because he's not good, it's just, it's a big job if you're gonna have him do the thing. The other thing is, you have CDCs in all the schools, and unfortunately, they really don't support instruction. They don't go in and look at instruction. They're doing a lot of administrative organizational stuff, needs to be done. But how do you give teachers feedback on their instruction, and how do you create partnerships and coaching for them? You coach your academic teachers, but you don't coach your CTE teachers. And those CTE teachers are teaching academics. And then, the use of student data and collection of analysis, and that just speaks for itself. You want the kids to be, you wanna use the information you have to do productive things to improve your program and move it forward, and then to measure your progress. So, I'm sorry, I took the whole, forty minutes. I should've tried to do twenty, but, sorry about that. I'm open to your questions, your thoughts.
In your visits to our schools, did you get the feeling that our school leaders are still educating students as though they were all going to college?
I feel like Bob Mueller. I don't think that's a universal feeling. There was good support for CTE, and I think even within that, they saw CTE kids as college material. So, I think, in general, you've got school administrators, school leaders, who do see the kids as individuals and don't necessarily think everybody's gotta be guided this particular way. They're trying to take their, I really believe that most of them are trying to take their resources and support kids in ways that'll get a good outcome for that kid and his or her aspirations. So, but, I think when you get into the faculty, then you got a different, you got a different animal. I'm old enough to remember the nation at risk, where we got into this, everybody's gotta go to college. And I drank the Kool-Aid, too. But over time, it's proved not to really be the fantasy we thought it would be.
So, about forty percent of graduating seniors in high school, they go to college? Either two or four years? Got about what?
Oh, I think it's higher than, if you, depends on whether you're looking at a state figure or whether you're looking at a national figure. I think the data.
Considering those stats, though, it's not just who goes to college, it stays and completes college.
That's it.
And so, see, that's where the technical program is so important.
I'm sure you turned my mic on.
Well, I didn't think, turning the mic on.
Well, I have one other question. Isn't it true that we ask middle-school students to pick a career field?
No.
We don't do that?
I don't think you're doing that, no.
We don't do that?
No, I think what you're doing with your STEM program, where the kids get that program, the intent of that program, and the content that is designed to be taught, really is asking kids to explore a whole variety of things and to learn some basic skills that would cut across careers. I think the, where the rubber meets the road is when you move from eighth grade to ninth grade, and you gotta begin to consider, you know, what do I wanna do, what might I wanna really specialize in?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other question?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So, how do we determine then what our CTE programs are gonna be, say, if this comes up? Is that tough? Is that determined then?
I mean, not me alone, it would be, I mean, this task force certainly using.
It would be, I mean, this task force certainly using this as a guiding principle. They check in with my advisory board, which some of you guys are on there. I know Mr. Johnson, we've got community college members on there. So, you know, we will use this as a recommendation. Information technology, career, I mean, the construction clusters, I think he's dead on the money there. Some of the things he pointed there, I think we've already got a good technology engineering design classes. We just started this past year, so we don't have a good foothold, but we've started already in the plan. But he's right. We've got some gaps. We've got the, but I can't, no. The protocol that he was talking about is what we've got to establish and what we got to follow. We can't have all these different people, we need this and you need that. So, we need to make sure that we're following a program of study that addresses local job needs, also feeds into a program at the community college. And then everybody, you know, and we're all getting certifications that can make them job-ready. So, that's what he was saying.
I got you. I just want to make sure we're doing a vetting process to, because, you know, he's got six, five, six programs here that he's recommending that we reduce. That we, we're not just doing horticulture classes because we did them last year. You know, does it make sense to do them this year and next year?
Remember, this is, this proposal's a five-year proposal. And one of the first steps that has to be done is not just what are you going to offer next year, but what, what should we really be doing? Not because we did it last year, we're going to do it again, but does it meet the workforce and economic development needs of your area? Does it reflect the academic, it's going to address the academic needs of the kids? And what are those sequences going to be? And at some point in time, I would hope that Brady would ask Todd to develop, what are those programs of studies? What are those pathways going to be? And that you get a presentation on them.
And that's some of the work that's been ongoing. But what we got to do, I've had trouble, you know, we need to do it, they're doing this over there.
Yeah.
And we need to be doing here. Well, no, we need to design what we offer based on employer needs here.
Here's what happens. An administrator goes to a meeting next door or halfway across the country and gets introduced to a program and says, boy, that'd be nice. We really should be doing that. Well, that, that may be true or it may not be true. And what it shouldn't be left to is the whim of that person to put that program in place. There should be a protocol where you say-
Sure. And that, that was the purpose of my question.
And what are those criteria, what are those criteria for offering that program?
I mean, we're working with the EDC. In fact, Robert here is going to be policing me on that. The new Perkins Five calls for a comprehensive local needs assessment every two years now. But the process, we're going to be talking about over the year, I mean, this coming year, because this is a transition year. But certainly, you've got to have strategic people on your advisory board. They've got to be, it's just not, the protocol has got to be there and we got to follow. We can't just follow a whim or something we see somewhere else.
And Dr. Shepherd, you're giving, I'm one of the newest guys on this board meeting on the Hill here. Do you do a lot of studies for the school system?
Yes, I do.
Come back?
Yeah.
We'll see you again.
Well, I, that's, that's up to Todd and Brady and you, but, you know, I am available to do that.
I'll tell you this.
I've got an investment here.
And I got skin in the game, too. I appreciate and I respect that. I'd like to see some numbers. I mean, if you're telling me that, hey, there's a program that needs to be reduced in size because it's not going to, nothing wrong, then tell me how many kids are taking that one, can, tell me how many kids are taking horticulture? Tell me how many are in this program, whether it's completed. And that's the kind of, and maybe I'm just not seeing a big enough picture here.
All, all of that data's available.
All that is available.
Yeah, yeah. It's quoted in the full study.
In the full study.
Yeah. But we can get you more information, yeah.
I mean, if we're going to pay you to do something, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think, you know-
See, I need more work, you know?
The first step of the, the process, and I hope we're going to continue on, this is just dog and dhole, is what I'm thinking. And I think we'll depend on Todd and, and the advisory groups to get together and come up with our steps. And it does need to be a long plan. There's things in here, you know, we re-own, we don't agree on. But I do want to say, and I want to say this because we have our region DPI guy here, you mentioned our problems with DPI. And I've said it many times, the biggest holdup to our CTE programs is DPI. And with, and the same thing's probably true with the community college is, is, they're too, we've got to do what's best for here in the county and our students. And it doesn't always jive with what DPI says we have to do. So, I think that's something we will have to continue to rely on our, pushing our legislators to help get DPI off our back on some things.
Are you finished with this project, Dr. Shepherd?
This, this is my last event right now.
It's your final Hoover.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for joining us.
It was, it was great being here. I had a lot of fun.
I have eyes on some things.
Met a lot of good people.
And, yeah, we're really proud of what we do here. We're proud of our CTE programs. And hopefully, this, this will make us better. Thank you, Barry. All right, thank you.
Yeah, be good.
All right. Ribic, I believe you've got a thrilling Title I plan.
Yes, sir. Hope you're on the edge of your seats for this year.
I'm more than that.
I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. I do want to start off by saying thank you to our board members for attending our open houses today. I can tell you that the staff of the schools really appreciates it when you attend those. I saw Mr. Hop, Mr. Howell at Sharon and Mr. Galian at Celeste. So, we thank you all for attending those today and taking your time. We do appreciate that. So, I do want to present today our district Title I plan. And this plan needs to be approved by the board before I'm able to submit it to the Department of Public Instruction. This year, we have 11 schools that will be served with Title I funds. And you can see those on our memo. I do want to add that Shepherd Elementary was a Title I school, but will no longer be Title I due to their decrease in their free and reduced lunch percentage. So, we now, we now have 11 schools that are Title I. Our total budget for this school year is $4,441,723. That is an increase of $156,203 from last year's allocation. We are using Title I funds to pay for 39 teacher positions and 37 and a half teacher assistant positions. And we do have funds that go directly towards the schools with that, but we also have strategic staffing funds that help us keep our allotments as close to 18, 19 as possible. And so, on the planning document, you can see the schools listed, how much each school is allotted, how much funding, how many teacher positions that is paying for, how many TA positions that is paying for, and then the remainder of the funds schools are able to use for materials. And you can see the difference between the previous year and this year. Most of our, all but two of our schools will be receiving more funds for materials this school year. The only two not, Cloverleaf is pretty much the same, just a difference of $150. And Union Grove is 346. And that is because of their decrease in the amount of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch at those schools. You can see our totals of strategic staffing, how much? That's 408,635. And like I said, that just goes to staffing as, is needed throughout our Title I schools. Our totals with that, we do put our schools into three different bands for Title I funding. That is the required, that we do that. Our highest band, which is NB Mills in Third Creek, you can see they get more funding per student that qualifies for free and reduced lunch than the other schools do. Cloverleaf is our middle band school. And the rest are in the lowest band. And we are required to present to the state a comparability report each year. And that is where we let the state know our class size for Title I schools and non-Title I schools. And we do go by last year's numbers with that because we don't know yet what they will be final for this year. And you can see our Title I schools' average class size was 17.1. And our non-Title I schools is 19.6. And we do have to pass a comparability test with those numbers and what's being a certain percent. And we are well within those means in our district. So, our Title I schools are benefiting from the funding, especially when it comes to staffing, where that is where most of our funds go to. Because we do know that the more adults and teachers and TAs we can put in a building, the better off our students definitely will be. So, that is our plan as proposed right now. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I will need a vote on this next week.
Mr. Ribic, can you tell me, total server 1920 for Chair of Personnel Office 35, and you said the budget's 4.4. What are the rest of the costs associated with that?
There are expenses that come out of that for the district. We have admin expenses, parent involvement, pre-K receives funding, our homeless students receive funding. Those are where our main other pots come from.
Is, is, are you saying we're getting 4.4 from the state covering this on the top, top federal and program Title I?
Yes, yes. Yes, sir. But like I said, most of our funding goes to our schools. Three million of it, if, if not more, goes to our schools for their staffing and their materials.
In the, the teacher positions?
Mm-hmm.
Like, Celeste has four teacher positions as Title I.
Yes, sir.
Is that four above what the state allows?
Correct.
So, we, as Celeste equals-
Four's teacher-
-four additional teachers that they would not have if they were not a Title I.
Correct.
And Cloverleaf has six and so on.
Correct.
Okay.
Am I, I'll go to, go ahead.
And I would like to also add, if you look at that sheet, you will see, for example, sometimes we have to adjust things a little, just for transparency. East Elementary, a lot of times what they draw down, they may say, you know what? Doctor was saying, I really need four teachers. And I have outstanding numbers. And sometimes that extra teacher, they go to a Sharon or Scotts or a mix like that that otherwise we can't meet numbers because they're such a small-sized school that they generate. Now, you can say that's Title I, or you can say that comes from, well, what we end up doing that shift. But in general, I would say East Elementary is one case that that's not necessarily so because they generate so much, they don't necessarily need to use five.
And that's coming out a little, too, because of the dual marching program.
Because of the dual marching program.
Exactly.
So, you actually have a principal that says, I don't need this teacher?
They're very true.
Yeah.
And the way, and, and can deny at East Elementary where you're going to put them.
I don't know.
You may have a space issue, too, even if you use them. And there are other trade-offs that they got, too. But just full transparency.
But in some cases, these positions take the place of the state paid or all these additional?
These are additional.
Additional, we're not-
This is on top of-
Yeah, we cannot use them to supplant. We cannot do that, no. And we are audited by the DPI each year. And then we actually just had a, they come and do, every four years, they do a visit to your district where they look through all the finances and they look through everything, all our Title I evidences. And we had that visit last year and we passed. We didn't have any findings with our finances or with how the schools are using their funds or the district.
You know, I'm thinking about that $900,000 or so dollars here. I'd like to see in a county of that of how we're spending it. It's not, not anywhere here. I mean, that's a lot of money.
I have a sheet I can present to you at the board meeting if you'd like to. I can get it to you before that. It's right, actually, it's right.
Twenty.
Yeah, it's right here. Yep, it has everything on it. Sure.
Any other questions?
So, based on the information we would give, Title I teaches you have 42 this past year. Is that correct?
I believe so. It 18, 19 is.
Forty.
So, there's three reduction, primarily because of Shepherd?
That's correct.
And are those three being picked up through local funds?
I can't speak to that.
Are those three being chucked around somewhere else?
I don't, I don't work with the allotments. You'd have to ask HR and finance. I'm not sure.
Well, I think if not as bigger as a three, because I would have to also go back and look at how did these schools change in A D M. So, they could be anywhere in the bunch and a whole number of teachers we have maintained and probably will actually be gaining. But for me to just say those three at Shepherd were taken away, no. That did, I can tell you, that did not happen. But exactly was it, was it one, was it whatever? I'd have to go back and look at the enrollment specifically for Shepherd.
When I say taken away, they weren't red.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, no.
No, no.
So, if they weren't red, they've been picked up from, up through another source through...
It, it could be, that doesn't mean that they're local either. It depends on where the students ended up in some cases.
Any other questions? We'll bring this back after the-
Can I, actually, Mr. Pointex, can I show you this, just to see if this is what you're kind of looking for?
That's personal. Can I, Mr. Rogers, to get you some copies if you wanted to do that tonight?
Okay. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Taylor proposed first reading.
Yes, I have two policies for first reading. The first one is policy 3101, school enrollment. And as Kelly and I started researching this, the policy that we have online was still titled concurrent enrollment and other curriculum expansions. And it did not include several changes that had taken place over the last eight, six or seven, eight years. And Kelly and I went back and looked, and I actually have the updates on my computer with the board memo where they went on the board agenda. Just not sure how it did get posted online. So, what we just figured the easiest way to do, because you're going from seven pages that we had online down to a two-page policy and a change in title, was just to give you a copy of the updated current policy 3101, that is as it should be online, as well as the old policy that we had online. And recommendation is just that we make all of those edits at every part of time and adopt that new policy as stated there.
So, you asked me just to scrap the old one?
Just scrap the old one and 3101, it's all in red, and we all will be changed. I'm not sure. We were not sure how that happened, but, oh, well.
So, the one in red completely replaces the old?
The one in red completely replaces the old one and includes all of the changes that have taken place over the last several years, but did not get reflected in our policy online.
Well, I read both of them, and I really liked the one in black.
Yeah.
It may have, but it makes more sense.
After the first reading, you go to second reading, vote against.
I think, is there nothing we can do to include some of this into that?
Well, I would have to go back because the changes that we were taking this time specifically were the updates to the Career and College Promise program and the current program standards, which technically were really not a lot of changes, very minimal changes. Those changes were required, they were all in Section A under Career and College Promise, just changing from tech prep, adding some job credentialing in there and changing just a few, mainly minor words. The problem is, the title changed in 2015 and then a lot of big changes. So, it's actually, as I was going back and doing some research, a change in 2013 with the policy as well as a change in 2015 with the policy. And I think maybe one other one, but I know that I look back and found those two on the computer, where they had come before the board previously for approval. So, those changes, actually, probably several of them, that are even approved by the board previously in the- previously, and it never got changed online.
Well, I, I still say that the old one makes more sense.
The other policy...
Now, the red one is what's recommended by the School Board Association, correct?
Red one is what's recommended, and any other changes are required by the school. The other policy is policy forty seven hundred, student records, and there are quite a few changes to this policy as well. There's clarification here on changes to, in language regarding student records and student education records, and delineating between those records and documents that are classified as such, talks a lot about what are defined the student records there in page C, or in Section C on page two, and then goes into some information as you pull through about which records and parts of student records and student educational records may or may not be shared with law enforcement and other agencies. On page six, starting at the bottom, there's one clarification there on video and audio recordings, and photographs, and the status of those, the student records. I do know a lot of this, even though it hasn't been in policy as our current practice, with sharing videos with parents, typically, you don't openly share those videos if there's a fight or something like that that goes on campus, but this does put in process and clarifies those pieces. There's clarification in here about, you know, what records may be amended, but that is a big change there with the viewing of the video and audio recordings and photographs. And I have shared this with Mr. Armstrong and Kelly Marcy, so, you know, she can make her counselors aware, as well as Laura Elliott, and we'll be sharing it with principals and APs once the board, I actually shared her doctor noting as well, since she works with a lot of public information requests, but we'll be sharing this with principals more as the board chooses.
Did, when they had the fight up at North, that basketball season, did, did the press get a subpoena for that tape?
I would never, I hope they asked a lot, I would never, law enforcement's never gotten involved, except in saying there wasn't enough charging.
Hey, guys, before we move forward with the next policy, we should bring your policies Monday in this package, so we don't have to read them tomorrow, okay? What's what they agree on?
Mr. Tim, only for a reading.
These are all...
My question to you in regards to the deal of enrollment. I know we have your other colleges and how kids are made aware of that in the middle schools, so that they start in the ninth grade. How much awareness do we make available to the kids about the Career and College Promise program?
So, there is a lot of, there's a section included in the Registration Notebook or the Registration Guidebook, and also in the Student Handbook about Career and College Promise. There's also information shared then through counselors, through the registration process. And then, you know, typically, those are geared towards students who are pursuing a more advanced course of study. So, and especially now, we have seen some good increases in those numbers, because the policy points are equivalent to AP courses and IB courses, and these courses are more widely accepted by other schools in the university system, as long as the students receive at least a C in the class, whereas there is no guarantee with the IB and AP courses. There's variation currently in the levels that different schools require for that acceptance.
And the university system has now changed its policy for all sixteen branches to say that if you get a level three or above.
I think they just changed that this year.
That goes into effect, it's coming year, right? It's coming year in. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, kids can start doing this in the ninth grade. And I know they have to be academically talented, you know, or above average.
They have to be at sixteen typically to access a lot of the courses.
Mr. Kennedy, the community college does a good job of marketing its courses to, to private schools, charter schools, home school students. So, in addition to working with us, they're working with other educational entities in the county.
And that is one of the indicators that we track, so we do have a large number of students that take these courses.
Can you give us that number that we've had this past year?
I might have it now, I mean, dig it up, dig it up.
Not, isn't it? Under student records, I had a couple of questions on that. And it, the value of the video request from parents, and in the policy that it is to schedule an appointment, and no later than forty-five days after their request by the parent tells them a student, that information would be given to them. Is forty-five days reasonable? I'm on page six of twelve, G one.
I think that's, I think that's reasonable. I think in most of the cases that I've been involved in the drug, I've probably been involved more so, it's typically much quicker than that.
Okay. Do we need to reduce that then, since you're doing a good job with it? Or do you need it there to help protect the state?
The flexibility in case there are extenuating circumstances, but I think typically our schools typically plot pretty quickly.
You answered that one, thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. LaSagne?
Dr. LaSagne.
I'm sorry. I'm moving on, I'm getting on down the road here, I'm way down at the next group. Dr. Taylor, before we move to Dr. LaSagne, I was gonna skip you, we're moving on. All right, Dr. LaSagne.
I'll take that as a challenge, to move quickly.
Yeah, there you go.
So I have several policies here. A significant one is the first one, policy code seventy one hundred, which is the recruitment and selection of personnel. This is required, and this is directly related to the new pre-K fingerprinting requirements that we are working on diligently to meet that October first, two thousand nineteen deadline. I think you are all familiar with this, but to just give you a very, very quick synopsis, this requires fingerprinting for anyone who has any alone interaction or counting in that ratio for our pre-K classrooms. So that means every, not only the teacher, the TA of those students, contingent upon what the lunchroom situation is, it could be some child nutrition workers, it definitely means the bus driver, it means the principal, it means the assistant principal, it means any therapist that may provide services to the student. If there are any practices in the school that require that individual to be alone with those pre-K students, we will have to track and do the fingerprinting on them. We are required to maintain records and updates, all of that, as part of that process. So we are still educating our principals, and to make sure all of our directors and everyone is fully aware of the requirements of this policy and the deadlines. So you will see the adjustments to that related largely to that piece.
Dr. LaSagne, before you move on, I have a question. What agency is going to do the fingerprinting?
Say that again.
What agency is going to do the fingerprinting?
We're working with law enforcement to get those done.
The Sheriff's Department?
And I'm going to extend a big thank you to Mr. Carter, because we have already talked about this, and are trying to work collaboratively in partnership to make sure that we have this taken care of where I don't count.
What is the cost? No charges, anything?
No, sir, I believe, when I talked to the sheriff the other day, he said that we waived that.
Now, one other question. Those teachers that are hired with Title I funds, since that's federal, are they going to have to have fingerprints as well?
Absolutely.
So, any teacher that's Title I has to have fingerprints?
No, no, not Title I, but Title I, if, if they're in a Title I school with pre-K, it's the, it's the pre-K.
It's a pre-K.
It's not a Title I.
It's not just the federal?
No.
Okay.
I was misunderstanding what you were asking.
All right, thank you.
This is a matter of always interest, this is a first reading?
This is the first.
It's the first reading.
Yes.
Deadline October twenty nine.
Yes.
Anything we want to hear about this?
Well, this is the policy. We've already been working on this because this is a requirement of DPI. So the policy, you know, follows, this is the update of your board policy and alignment with the School Boards Association.
Conseil schools were noted by last spring?
Maybe April, May.
Yeah, it was last spring.
Yes.
So you can't do any fingerprinting until we approve it, correct?
No. We, what, no, there's nothing with this that keeps us from doing the fingerprinting. This just aligns your board policy. We can do fingerprinting. We can do fingerprinting today. There's nothing that keeps us from doing it. As a matter of fact, a lot of what, without getting too much in the weeds, this has been a piece of pre-K for a long time, but the way it was interpreted was differently than more recent guidelines, is my understanding, and I'm not a pre-K teacher. And so that's why there's this hard date of October first, two thousand nineteen, but I can go and get fingerprinted tomorrow.
For ten dollars?
Yes, exactly.
I believe you didn't be...
I, you got nothing. A lot of people got nothing.
So you're aligning your, your policy with, you're adding more depth to your policy.
When the state and Fed change rules, then it goes to the School Board Association, then they change our policy. That's a ever-going situation. We're usually months behind on our policies.
Well, my, Mr. Tim, my question was, to keep us out of trouble, since it is not board policy until we approve it, we start doing something, is that going to get us in trouble?
No, because...
We're following, we're following the federal state law, that overrules our policy anyway.
Okay.
If it's required, it's required. Just cut, yeah, we're, we're low mental toll problem.
Absolutely.
So, but we're, yeah, that's what you're gonna find out in most of our policies, is the reason they're being changed is because the states or feds change something, and we have to change our policy to match it. But if it's a rule by then, it overrules us.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no more questions on that, seventy one thirty licensure. You will see there's just a recommended update of terminology, as well as requirements for the Beginning Teacher Support Program. You will notice that that's just a change in the oversight of DPI largely, it puts it more on the LEA, as well as just your basic updates for seventy one thirty. On seventy seven thirty, when we made our last updates in compares, in comparing the recommendations from the School Boards Association, we already corrected that piece in our policy when you approved it previously, so there will be no need to vote on that one next, well, upon second reading, because we've already addressed that in the book of board policy.
Dr. LaSagne, can I go back to seventy one thirty, please?
Yes.
Under B one, adjunct CT instructors, I believe that if the governor signs a budget, that'll switch to twenty hours, is that correct?
It will probably change it.
Well, yeah.
Which would warrant another update.
Okay, I just wondered, because I don't think that's, I think that's waiting for the governor's signature, which is...
It's approved, and you can get a copy.
Are you kidding me?
No, it's approved.
It just happened.
The budget?
No, 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 no.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
The bill that you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
That, it changes from ten hours for a week, twenty hours for a week.
Yes, and that would come, that would come in your fall.
Yeah, I guess, so it'll be updated again.
School Boards Association updates.
I got it, I got it. Good, thank you.
Policy seventy nine forty, classified personnel suspension and dismissal. You will see a clarification of classified and at-will employment, and it also clarifies that classified employees cannot be dismissed or suspended for discriminatory or otherwise unlawful reasons. Policy code forty seven oh five seventy eight twenty five, and the corresponding regulation piece, which is what the R stands for. I want to bring that to your attention. When I went to review this, that was a new policy in two thousand and six, which was before, I wasn't even in I L six with schools then, and somehow, it is not currently in the policies. And so I am bringing that forth as a new policy. I did work with the School Boards Association to kind of get the history. It was originally sent forward in two thousand and six, and as you can see there, revised in two thousand and eight, and all they were recommending was some changes to the regulation piece, but neither one of these were part of your package of policies. So it is our recommendation, particularly with them dealing with the confidentiality of personal identifying information, that we bring this forth for your review and recommend their addition to your suite of policies. The regulation does not require a vote, but we still, it is, upon approval of the policy, we would add the regulation piece for review. Are there any additional questions?
Very good, thank you. Mr. Armstrong, you've got forty two forty?
Policies forty two forty seventy three twelve, child abuse reports and investigations. This policy updates the senior reporters suspected child abuse. It talks about, we used to report everything to Department of Social Services, now there are two separate structures in place where we report child abuse and lack dependency or malt treatment to neglect anything that was, and let even, whenever there's a parent, whenever in a North Carolina, when a school employee knows or has cause to suspect child abuse, lack dependency or death as a result of malt treatment by a parent, a guardian or custodian caretaker of that child, then we report that, as we've always done to the Department of Social Services. If a school employee who has cause to suspect that a child in a childcare facility has been malt treated by a caregiver or has died as a result of malt treatment, we now report that to the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Child Development and Early Education. That's one of the biggest changes. If it's, if led by a parent, we report it to Social Services, Department of Social Services. If this happens in one of our facilities or childcare facilities, we report it to the Department of Human Services. Nothing changes about whenever an employee has an R, we always report it to the principal. We also, the principals are responsible for reporting any, any type of neglect reports that's intended, any, talks about any employee who fails to report, they're just put in by the board, and also an employee who fails to report child abuse can be, be made to be, can be placed on the state child malt treatment record. So those are the, those are the biggest changes in that, especially going from just reporting everything to the Department of Social Services, now to two different agencies, depending on where they have these places, or who, parts of these.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Armstrong?
I have one. I'm not sure about... I'm, I'm not sure if I totally understand the legality of the instructed to report it to the Director of Social Services. And then after that, they report it to the principal? Or do they go and tell the principal that they suspect this, and give me a call, just wanted you to know? Is that done simultaneously, or is it, is it two different sets?
Yeah, I'll go back. They should report to the principal. They're, where school employees report it to the principal. The principal reports to the Department of Social Services.
Well, you know, that's not what it says, and that was the confusing part to me, you know, because certainly the principal, you know, would be notified, but I didn't know if the teacher felt like they had to report it like then and there, and then go try to find the principal and...
You know, and I, I'll tell you, really, um, I don't think there's anything wrong with, however you report it. You report it directly to the principal, and the principal gives it to the Department of Social Services, or you go directly. I don't think it matters. I think that the main thing is that it's reported immediately.
And I totally agree with you, but that's not what it says. And a teacher, particularly a first-year teacher, might really be confused, and that, that's all.
Very good. No other questions. We'll move to Dr. Sane Personnel Report.
Okay, um, Mr. Cage, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, you have the opportunity to review the August personnel report thus far. You will get an amendment to this personnel report that's gonna have a lot more, um, additions to it.
You probably may as well make a new report.
Say that again.
Just make a whole new amendment.
Exactly. And so, just, just so you know, um, it will look very, um, different, particularly when you look under, um, approval of licensed personnel as well as rehires. And so, you will be getting that, um, this weekend. If you will just review that carefully. And if you have questions, please, because of the volume that, that will be in that report, if you can send those to me over to Chalk Timmy and I'll try to do whatever research for whatever questions you may have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, is it, i- i- am I correct, we, we don't have, we, we don't approve transfers? Or is that our, is that, is that, we have to do that, or? It really, were they on there for our information?
Anything with this star, the side of it is not, we don't approve, is that correct?
That's correct. That's for information.
Yeah, chance first or not.
Well, I, I just, I had some questions, but I won't, I think it ought to be handled in a closed session, uh, environment. I, I'm talking about personnel, uh, so I won't, I won't, I won't ask those questions.
Very good.
But I will have a later date.
I think my question goes back to policy seventy-one hundred. And, um, seventy-one hundred on page five, five, at the top of the page, so, part three, employment procedures. All applicants selected for employment must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board. And I'm not real sure how we do that in such a time constraint. You've probably hired some teachers that have reported to work, and we haven't approved them. And so, is, is that something that we as a board and administrative team need to look at?
Actually...
And whether, and whether we need to maybe call special meetings to approve personnel, um, or what? Because, you know, if, if we don't, we're not, we're not allowed to do this policy.
And perhaps, Mr. Johnson, can speak to this even better, better than me, but I can tell you, even from my tenure as a teacher, this goes back as a long period of time as a culture in our school district. And there has been such a press to get people ready to work, that once they hit a certain point in, um, that induction, it is always routine, and there are not questions, whether it be a background, or we don't, we have the materials we need. That is how this district has traditionally, um, operated. When I originally came on board and tried to do it the way I have experienced at other places, where literally it could take a month for that person to start, that's why you have thirty days time, um, period written into things, then you get crucified on the other end because they're waiting for people to start. We are willing to do whatever is the pleasure of the board, but that is what your policy says, and that is not what has traditionally been done in an effort to get people started as quickly as possible.
And that's all I'm saying is, you know, we either need, just like I was talking about to Armstrong about his policy, and we either need to say it the way we're doing it, or we need to redo it, whatever. And that, that's all I'm saying, because I know the time constraint that you're under in trying to get the personnel. And I just want to do it the right way. Obviously, there's some questions about personnel, but, you know, right now, but that personnel, a board member might have a question about, probably has already started work.
Well, that's a transfer.
Well, but you, you see what I'm saying.
Yes, exactly.
So, I would like us at least to discuss that, is whether or not it's something that we need to look at or, or change.
So, it really boils down to expedience and getting these people started as quickly as possible versus getting action from the board as you're sitting in session. And we're not opposed to asking for special sessions just to do personnel. If, if you, if you folks would like to entertain that, we can certainly comply with that.
Well, the only thing is, uh, it did that individual sign a contract? And if they did, in my opinion, uh, that's wrong, that's breaking board policy. If you put that person to work and they signed it, you'd have put them to work and had to sign a contract. But if they signed, if you offered them a contract and they signed it, and you put them to work and we had to approve it, and I have to agree with my fellow board member here.
Ms., Mr. Howell, they generally do not get contracts traditionally until September. It will probably be a little earlier this year, but contracts for teachers generally go out in September.
No, you, you, I would, I could never work for y'all, because I wouldn't go to work till last October.
What they do is they sign, there's a document in their package, um, that they sign for the interview. And that's what people offer.
And that, that could, could that include a cop clause, opinion board approval?
It does. That's exactly what the document says.
It's already there.
But I would like to see us do something.
That's fine. I got no problem with that.
I bet, again, with...
Special meeting to discuss personnel prior to, because I think our word is our bond as much as a contract. If I shake your hand and I tell you to go to Celestine and start teaching first grade, just because I don't give you a contract until thirty days later, I'd hate to come back and say, well, you know, the board didn't approve, you know, I'm sorry. Boy, that was really this thing, and I don't...
Right, and, and, uh, as Dr. Sane pointed out, our practice, um, has been over these last fifteen years or so, and maybe longer than that, I don't know. I've been...
Been longer than that.
Yeah, I've been doing this fifteen years as a deputy and now superintendent. It's just, uh, we vet these candidates, and we try not to bring you anybody that's in question. And so, it is, uh, an exercise to just speed up the process. The only way I know to get around that is to call you folks in more often and ask, here's, here's our list of candidates, and we vetted these folks. If you see their name, is, does any name on this list arise to your attention?
That's what we've done. You've got a name on that list, that's the meat of the thing, a contract is shown to me about. If I know something about that particular individual nobody else knows about, that's the time to speak up. As a board member, that's the time to speak up. Everybody else untrusting this week over here, that they have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. Now, in listening to just what's been said, the secret, the word expediency has been a prime product, okay? To come to that, and the management that it is at this point, and say, oh, well, now we're gonna add a board meeting to okay that before they can do so, oh, come on! Surely, there's gotta be a better way than that. I mean, if you have to change something, rewrite something, hit somebody in the head, whatever, I don't care. But another board meeting because something is whatever, I, I, that's not gonna help.
Well, that, that would almost...
It's gonna extend it.
Yeah, almost put us meeting every two or three days at this time of year.
At this time of year, you'd be there two, at least two or three times more, just to, just to okay the contracts that we do as a group.
But I, you know, if we need to change, we need to make a decision, make the policy fit the situation.
If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna try to fit it, and you rewrite to fit it, as to how you're doing it, if you do it that way, I'd almost be willing to bet you the best writers in the world, they're gonna end up with expediency.
Well, I think we've got to be real careful that, that we're not hiring every individual ourselves. I mean, we hire, we pay, we pay the superintendent and his staff to hire these people, not us.
That's right. And so, at that point, a lot of that is, is just like she just said. They vetted everyone right down to the wire anyway. By the time it gets to us, that's like I was just saying. Unless I know something about them individually, personally, in my neighborhood, I really have nothing to say at that point. So, it's a matter of, so adding another meeting, I don't think's gonna help. But if you want to rewrite it to be back to what it is that we do, I still think you're a real good person.
And we have always operated under the last sentence. If you look right there, where you were speaking on page five, Mr. Kennington, the sentence that you're talking about is all applicants selected for employment must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board. But the next sentence says, in situations in which the employee must be hired between board meetings, that's what you may want to define. It says the superintendent is authorized to approve hiring of such personnel contingent upon approval by the board at its next scheduled board meeting. That's what that piece of paper that's in our induction process addresses.
That, that comes with...
Still things that I have concern about, I'd like to express to you to, um, Frank, and you did share with me the seizure of transfers during the year. And I do want to, you know, talk about that as, as we move on, and so we don't get caught during the middle of the year, and then we, we have a bunch of transfers. So, when, when things slow down, um...
Well, they'll never slow down, but we can definitely do it for September, Cal.
That'd be great. I would love it.
We'll be, we'll be ready for it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions on personnel?
Have we cut a program down in, uh, electronics here at Katz, and have we cut the program down in firefighting here at Katz?
We don't have electronics. You got manufacturing electronics.
Manufacturing.
They've changed the name on that, that switches names.
And we've got, is the program smaller here than it was, or?
These guys go to, go to these other schools in different semesters. You're talking about the transfers? Yeah, so, uh, like Jay was at Katz the whole year time this year. Now, first semester, he'll be at Lake Norman in the morning and be here. All the auto guys, all those guys do that. They, they change schools in the semesters.
So, our program here hasn't been done?
No.
It was part of the level one classes.
Yeah, they go to the level one classes. Yeah, yeah, no, that's, it's just, that's just done for bookkeeping, but that's the way it's always been.
We have to have an accurate record of where that individual's located, even from a sta- safety standpoint.
Right.
And for our reports that we have to do to the board. So, even if a third-grade teacher moves to a fourth-grade position, they have to transfer that person to that position. So, you will see that very frequently on the personnel report.
I was just wondering if the program had gotten smaller.
On the thirty-first July, you said we had twenty teachers.
That's where I was just...
Can you, can you give us another date on that?
You read my mind. It's about the same place it was, but it's different people. And that, that's still my answer. We're still, we're actually today, when I called it, we had twenty-one teaching positions, um, still out there. And then I still have, um, the same number. I still have about twelve, a dozen, um, custodial positions, um, largely not TAs, um, teacher assistants. We're really focused on E C and making sure we have that met. Um, I know that Ms. Gillen has been working very diligently with transportation to make sure our routes are gonna be covered, and today was a big day. And I'll let you know, our enrollment is up.
One hundred, twenty thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, um, at this time. So, now we'll start evaluating that all over again, which...
I'll be still up on Thursday.
When, after open house, um, that, that's a big piece for us to go back and look and assess class sizes and, um, all of that, so.
What was that magic number, Melissa, that we, we get more money?
Uh, we're, we're...
I was just gonna pull that up, um...
I was told by a principal tonight that, uh, their enrollment was up at enough where he was gonna be, uh, authorized to run the teacher.
Yeah, they're, they're anxious to wait for me to just, you get a teacher, you get a teacher, you get a teacher like Oprah. They're waiting, they're ready.
So, states allotted A D M for us was twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-one. So, if we have a hundred more than that, uh, we'll get additional funding.
Excellent.
It's best month one of two, and so that funding usually does not come through till December or January. But regardless, if we feel confident on it, we can go ahead and...
So, if they just show up, we'll be in good shape.
Ten days, huh?
Best month one or two.
The number that, um, Melanie gave, Larson, is to us at seventeen and tonight, pretty much.
So, yeah, it, it does look really good.
Twenty thousand one.
Five hundred and sixteen.
Excellent. Very good. Any other?
I have another question, Chairman. Um, do we have the twenty-one teacher, um, positions, slots covered for Thursday?
Covered. We do.
With whom?
Who you named it? That's the principal, the principals are...
Certified, uh, is that a retired?
I would have to go and pull certified versus non-certified, but most of our principals, they already have people that know their buildings, that they know work their classes. They already have them in the hole, you know, um, waiting if they're not able to fill that position. Some of those are also filling positions for people that we've actually hired, but we have to wait on them.
So, would you say the majority of those twenty-one might be, uh, people that are...
Majority just certified.
Certified.
Absolutely. And that's because of how we run ourselves.
Now, how many, uh, of the twelve custodians and the twenty TAs, uh, does that affect the buses? Are we ready, do we have buses, buses all the, let's put it this way, are all of our buses gonna run Thursday?
All of our buses should be running Thursday, and when I alluded to Ms. Gillen working with transportation, that's what we're trying to nail down right now, to make sure every single one of those buses runs.
How many did we open up? Did you tell us several times over the year, this past year, we opened up the first day of June, and we had X number of buses that didn't run?
There was two or three.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Dr. Sane? I want, I'm, I'm, can I switch something up, because I just really realized Ricky's sitting over here. He needs to go home. I just, I, 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 we're getting ready, before we do budget, can I move?
I was gonna suggest the same thing.
Can I move Ricky out?
Sure, absolutely.
Let's move Ricky in. I'm sorry, Ricky, I should have moved you a long time ago.
That's fine. Uh, Chairman Page, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Transportation Department is requesting that you consider approving the purchase of three activity buses to replace a portion of our aging activity bus fleet. We're requesting to buy two twenty-twenty Thomas seventy-two passenger activity buses at a cost of ninety-three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars each, and one twenty-twenty Thomas pass, seventy-two, or forty-two passenger bus with a lift for a cost of eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Total cost is two hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. I'd also like to point out in your memo, paragraph three, it's got bus number eighty-twenty-three. That should actually be eighty-thirty-two.
All right, and folks, this is cap, or it was already set aside by, uh, Dr. Miller in preparation for this, uh, Dr. Miller.
But it was, it's not.
Right, it was already, so this is... Right, it was already, so this man's been set aside the capital budget for this request. Uh, he asked that board approve that he's decided, uh, and as you can see, he's replacing buses that are no longer really usable. Uh, these buses are air-conditioned, is that correct?
The ones we're ordering are air-conditioned.
Oh, I knew buses, oh, I knew buses are air-conditioned. Any questions?
I, I got one question down, I'm gonna look for this, so no problem. Uh, did all the school buses get washed?
Yes.
And the, and the wash pits working good?
Wash pits working great. I think I, looking at our buses, I think they look better this year than they have in many years.
Excellent.
And one thing, you know, it does put a wax coating on that we were not able to do before. So, I was over there one day and it made eighteen, eighteen buses by the time I was over there. So, uh, there is, Claire, uh, Ricky, that actually, the bid was through July thirty-first.
Right.
Your gentleman is holding these three buses.
The, the con, the new contract has not been awarded yet. He has offered to let us purchase these buses on the old contract, and he's holding these things till we make a decision.
We, we would like reported, new contract comes out, it's gonna be what, twelve thousand dollars more?
It'll be about twelve thousand dollars more if we wait.
So, if we, uh, I think we need to suspend the rules. Go ahead and prove this, because we wanna save twelve thousand dollars. So, we need to-
I have a motion to suspend the rules and vote on this decision.
I'll second. I got a motion, second, we suspend the rules and vote tonight. Any discussions? All favor, I?
Aye.
Pose no. Carries unanimously. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to purchase these buses.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept these recommendations, purchase these buses as listed on the-
That motion's second, purchase these three buses, uh, three activity buses, uh, as requested from, uh, Mr. Adams in Transportation Department. Any discussion? All favor, I?
Aye.
Pose no. Carries unanimously. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
He said, he said, like we're saying, it's-
Thank you.
He said it's worth saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah. He's, he's, yeah. Uh, I appreciate the board doing that. Uh, he said that we were in that little time crunch, so thank y'all for moving on. And now, of course, we have the wonderful discussion of budget. Uh, let me just say where we're at in my opinion on this. We still have no idea about the state budget. Uh, I think we've kicked this thing enough. We need to give Ms. White a figure of what we're gonna allow from fund balance at this point in time. But we also have to understand and make sure that we, uh, when the state budget comes out, we're gonna have to look at the budget again. And when we get our final numbers, it's obviously we're gonna have to look at budget. So, I think she needs some guidance. Y'all had asked for the committee, the, the, uh, budget committee to get back together. And I went to the meeting with Sam, who's a member of the committee, and Vice Chairman Gagian went with us. Uh, we asked them for cuts and they put a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars on it. Uh, I think, Ken, I think you, you made a good statement. I forget how you said it. It's kinda like, I don't remember. You asked the wrong crowd to cut something, cause they all want something. Uh, it's, uh, we have to have the athletic trainer west. I couldn't believe that hadn't been already in the budget, cause that's required. Uh, and with the growth of Lake Norman Elementary, Mr. Johnson has recommended that we, uh, hire an assistant principal down there. Uh, looking at the numbers we have, we may have some other, other expenses when we find our numbers. But this time, I do think we, or at least next week, we need to give her a, a working number. Uh, Ms. White, the committee asked for one point six five million. Uh, are you standing by your one point five numbers feeling confident?
Um, yes.
Okay. Open up the discussion.
I was trying to say also with that, I think everyone understands that a budget is a budget. I mean, it's like we talked about before, we budget at full employment. We have budget assuming, I try not, for most of our certified staff, I budget assuming they all take health insurance. And there are lots of things that go into a budget number. So, when I say it's gonna be budgeted at one point five million, that's at this point in time, right now, it's full employment. I'm making assumptions about the state budget, about personal choices regarding the insurance, um. So, I try to be conservative with that, you know, when using that kind of budget. I don't know which one to use this? What? Nobody else is using this?
(laughing)
Um, so, I'm just- Yeah, it's a little-
Turn on the mic, it's on.
Does that sound like it's in the mic?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I think everyone understands that, but I just wanna make it clear that it is just a budget. It's based on estimates, our best estimate, and, and it's always moving and fluctuating and changing. Um, so, and actually, I have very little control over where it ends up. Um, actually, probably close to zero. No, I mean, I do have some control. I do manipulate positions and make sure the lowest are in the state or in the local budget. You know, I can help with that restart budget, making sure that's used as efficiently as possible. But when higher decisions are made, or when, um, other expenses are made that are outside of my, you know, discretion, I think you all understand that too, but when you say I'm gonna give you a target, there are lots of factors that play into that, and they're not all under my control.
Uh, Ms. White, I understand, and no problem. I, I think you do a wonderful job, and I, I'm glad I don't have your job.
Okay, I'm not talking to cast the bug. I'm just trying to make sure it's all, it's clear.
Uh, but I thought, Mr. Chairman, that this board asked that the superintendent and the committee, if you will, go through the line item budget and see if there's not, we could cut a thousand dollars here, five thousand here, ten thousand here, if we couldn't cut something. But I want to just say to this board that come time to vote on this budget, I ain't going to ask for a raise for classified employees, and I ain't going to ask for a one dollar an hour raise for all bus drivers. Now, it's up to you guys to either vote it down or vote it up, but that's gonna change this number. And I'm sorry, Ms. White, but those people are forgotten, in my opinion. And they deserve to see that we really here are representing them. So, I, I just wanted to bring that out and, uh, let everybody know what's coming. Thank you.
You'll be there next, okay? All right. When I look at this, at this particular point, I don't know how we get to this point every year. In the first place, I don't see how we get to this point and leave the trainer off when you say it's required. Why was that not in the original budget and never cut, never touched? Okay? Now, I don't know as much about the trainer as I do about the assistant principal. But let's talk about the assistant principal, okay? The trainer, to me, is a no-brainer. We have to have it. If that means that we take more out of the fund balance, and I just love it to death, but we take more out of fund balance. All right, and you look at the other one. That prin, that principal has been working at that particular place with no help and raised the numbers of students from, what was it, four fifty to five fifty to five ninety-four? I mean, if my numbers are correct. The cutoff for getting an assistant principal is five fifty, or is it five hundred? Five fifty? Okay, if it's five fifty, she has five ninety-four. That, to me, is a no-brainer. You can't go to a football coach and tell that football coach, uh, we'll pay you twenty thousand dollars this year, but if you win, instead of fifteen games this year, if you win twenty next year, I'll give you five thousand dollars more. He wins twenty-five, and you come back and tell him, oh, I'm not gonna give you that five thousand dollars. This is the same thing. There is a level of assistant principals. She reached that level. When she reaches that level, she gets the assistant principal. Why wasn't in the original budget? It was in the original budget, cut out. I'd say put it back in. I'm sorry, Ms. White, but-
Why would that mean?
I know, I know, I know, I know, no, no.
Let me ask you this question. You're gonna go strictly by numbers. Suppose we got a school that's fell below the number for an assistant principal, so shouldn't that school lose an assistant principal?
Well, sure.
Transfer, why don't we transfer them?
Why don't we, that's my question, why don't we-
That's the question. See, at that point across the board, since it's not sitting in front of me, I'm assuming that's not present. But if it's present somewhere, then that could be a possibility. If it's not present, or if you go to that principal that has two assistant principals and tell them they're gonna lose one, and they're gonna cut their throat in the back room, I might hesitate, but-
Well, that, we asked, we asked the committee to look for cuts. We got one point six. It's up to y'all how much money. We can let them spend all our fund balance. That's up to you guys.
Well, I recognize-
I just say about the assistant principal, um, given our, with the assistant principal situation, given our two hundred-plus students above our allotted ADM, we very well may receive state funding for an additional assistant principal position.
That's true, too.
Um, but we won't know that, like I said, until like-
And also, I think from what y'all, what you two have said too, that could be somewhere else.
That's what I'm saying. Uh, we, we don't know what the states will do. We don't know what our numbers are. We need to just give, you need a working number right now. Is that correct?
I don't need, the main thing I would like, and I said last month, was regarding pay raises. Um, if you're gonna make them effective July first, I've already missed one payroll. And to go back and recalculate is a manual process, which we can do, dump in Excel, help with that. Um, but if you're going to give a pay raise to classified staff, a local pay raise, they all come back. Majority of them come back on payroll in August. Um, and if you're going to make it retroactive, if you're going to wait and see, and then, you know, maybe it's January, whatever, you know, but to meet the board's wishes, uh, it would be better for staff, if you're gonna do it now, to go ahead and do it. It'd be better for me selfishly and my staff, um, to know as soon as possible also. Um, so, that's not saying one way or another whether I recommend it, it's just saying the timeliness of it. That's the only thing. And I'm sure that Dr. Lussey wants to hire physicians would like to know that as well. Um, you know, the sooner, the better in the classrooms or in the school buildings. But for me, right now, it's the raise is the thing that I think is kinda hanging out there that I would like to have some clarity on.
And we, we don't know what the state's gonna do.
No.
But it, but it is important, uh, like Mr. Kelly's saying, uh, down there for this AP position. In particular, I mean, she's gonna need that next week, you know, she's gonna need that Thursday.
Well, I think that's up to administration to hire or not hire.
So, so what we typically have not done is, is soon as they finish, as soon as they hit the five hundred and fifty of student, is not necessarily when you get that AP.
Right.
So, say for instance, it was five ninety-one, well, on the latest numbers I just gave you today, it's five eighty-one. And it, it goes fluid, and so, we were saying just wait till that number stabilizes, because it may impact other schools. And so, that wa, that was the recommendation. But I understand, I've been a principal, I understand the expediency, I understand her wanting that assistant principal. But we, we also have to look at the, um, other factors also. And so, that was our position on waiting for those.
Let me come back in at that particular point and say then, okay. I mean, it's like so many other organizations in the world. You can hold your money in a balance all you like and won't do you a bit of good. Money's like a new, it's no good unless you spread it around. Okay? So, we've got that, okay? If we say we're gonna cover the assistant principal, and we say we're gonna cover the trainer, then if you get the state funds to cover it, fine, not, we take it out of, take it out of fund and move on.
And I think it's our job so much to hire positions, that's administration. It's our job to say how much money we're gonna provide.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I wanna go back to that, you know, a point was made that we now have some schools in particular that don't have the numbers to support an AP. And I think we need to look at potential transferring or utilizing our resources a little better in those situations.
And with the new numbers, it, they may be back over. I don't know. And that's where, again, I'll, I think, I think if, if, if we're gonna establish we, this is a, a number, when you cross that number, you get one, I think we have to go both ways with it. If you fall back below the number, you have to go both ways, yeah. That was my, my point with the committee, and of course, the committee, uh, did, did, did not agree with that. But that, again, for administration.
Put all this into wash, and they have to work that out.
Yeah, right.
But right now, I would spend the money.
Can I ask you to consider one thing with that? Particularly when you're talking an assistant principal position, I, I get that. But I think there should be a consideration for assessment of that on an annual or at least a semester basis. Because when that principal sets up those duties for the year, they set up, um, observations, they, um, set up duties, and they balance those across all of those. So, if you say, okay, the minute you fall below five hundred and fifty students, and say for instance, you're taking that away from a high school, which is probably what it would be, where you have athletics and all of that, then you're gonna get phone calls on the other end for that high school. And so, just thinking about when, how you plan for a year keeping that.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's what we're talking about, is looking at, you know, uh, you know, when the school starts or whenever the, the, the number of students balances out. But we, we wouldn't be like, if in the mid, if in December they fell below, then, then they lose the AP. It would be, you know, again, the next year, if the numbers didn't come back up, then they would, we'd have to look at that.
My point was, it, that we gotta be careful making a hard number. I'm saying that five fifty, you're going up, because you, you gotta be careful with that. Again, I think administration has to make those decisions. I think we simply set a budget, this is what we're gonna spend. And then, I think that's up to y'all. If, if we're gonna need more fund balance to, to do what you people want to do or need to do, but I don't think it comes down to us, or we're gonna hire a school an AP. That's not our job. That's their job. I think it's, uh, how much fund balance are we willing to use? And then y'all gotta figure out how you're gonna do it within that budget.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's the real, real question. And, and that's why I would go along tonight and say, you know, the recommendation that came from the finance officer is to hold it at one point five million. We've been late, and we see what the figures are as far as the numbers, if we can ever get a state budget, if we can, you know, put some things together, I think we would make a lot better decision on that. I think, you know, what I would like to know, what Mr. Howe was talking about in the interim, if Ms. White can give us some figures on what it would cost to, to give the classified employees a one percent raise and what it would cost for, I think, a dollar for-
Per hour.
Per hour for bus drivers.
Okay.
You know, just get that in.
I have some rough numbers on a one percent raise, but that's been thrown out before. Um, so, it would include bus driver, but a dollar raise is much more substantial than that. Um, so, I think, you know, rough for the local budget, including benefits, it'd be about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Say that again.
Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
They're worth it.
This is not a discussion of worth, or, you know, it just, uh, yeah, I can't, I'm not disagreeing with that. So, some concerns with that, um, if you're talking about all classified staff across the whole district, um, we don't get any additional federal money for that. We don't get any additional child nutrition or primetime money for that. I think it would cost primetime about forty-two thousand, I think it costs, I'm sorry, child nutrition forty-two thousand, primetime ninety-five hundred. And child nutrition, and, you know, we can just go ahead and talk about it, um, they lost four hundred thousand dollars this year. They don't need any more help, um, adding to their expenses. Um, so, there's, you know, and then the bus driver raise, uh, you know, legitimate for sure, but then it could negatively impact our efficiency rating, that could, you know, reduce our overall funding going forward. Um, so, when I say one point five million, that's something that I feel like, you know, comfortable with. But if you're looking at adding two hundred thousand dollars for raises at a minimum, plus, you know, a dollar for bus drivers, I personally do not know where I would find reductions for that to stay within that one point five million and not impact the classroom. I know that's really good for a lot of, you know, the board members. I just don't know where that's at.
I, I, man, must've fucked microphones. The, I do not like the one percent. If we're gonna do something, I wanna go do something differently. We have classified people making fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. That's, that's a five hundred or six hundred dollar raise. We got classified people making fifteen thousand dollars a year. That's a hundred and fifty dollar raise. I would much prefer looking at, at doing a set amount for the people. Uh, one percent really doesn't. The people we wanna help are the low, the low, the bus drivers, the TAs. One percent is not gonna help them a lot. The state's looking at a one percent. They're originally, we're looking at five hundred dollars or one percent. Uh, I, I, I mean, if we're gonna do something, let's at least do something that's, 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 uh, helps our lower paid employees more. That's my feeling on it. I also, uh, think it's gonna be really hard for us to make decisions like this until we know- I also, uh, think it's gonna be really hard for us to make decisions like this until we know what the state does. They could turn around and, and give, give a, a raise that we're not expecting.
Well, it will compound it, right, so if you go ahead and issue a one percent raise, and the state gives a two percent raise, you're giving them a two percent raise on top of already a raise of one percent, um, and, yeah, so...
Well, I was just giving you what I was gonna propose to the board.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, so I can work on it, yeah.
The, uh, you, I think you guys told me that the, uh, classified employees were gonna get a step increase this year?
Uh, no, classified get a, um, we instituted a local longevity incentive for classified staff, and they get two steps for every five years of service. So when they reach a five-year benchmark, five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year, they get two steps. So that gives them about three and a half to four percent raise on that year on top of the state raise. So, no, there is no automatic roll of steps, they're no longer ten, ten, ten years in service, so. Um, but you do have that already in place, and it impacts your budget every year, and it impacts, you know, a handful of classified staff that, you know, is based on a benchmark on here.
Well, the, the... Get our, get our, uh, observation, please. Not to be atypical or typical, but what I have in front of me is what was presented to us from the budget committee. We've now spent fifteen minutes talking about something that's not in front of me, that I have no favor work on, that I have nothing from anybody on, except what we're saying. If we're gonna talk about a one percent, two percent, three percent, four, I, well, you know what that is. Then, put it in writing and bring it to us so we can look at it.
Well, it's not coming from us, that's why it's not in writing from me.
I, I, that's what I'm saying. If it's not coming from somebody, if it hasn't been proposed, all the things he's mentioned, all the things he's mentioned, all the things that have been mentioned, if it hasn't been coming, if it hasn't come down through somebody to be presented to us, then what are we doing?
I think it's...
Is a good idea, I'm not saying it's wrong. I like it, I, I like five percent better, because then it could go to McDonald's twice instead of once. But, at the same time, it's not something that we have formulated and put in front of us. It's not something to me that we can be discussing unless somebody has studied it, put everything they can into it, and then asked for it in the book.
With all due respect, with all due respect, I've sit on this board for three years, that budget time, and these are the forgotten people, I'm sorry. They are the forgotten people, and it's time to reward those people for their hard work. And it wasn't in the budget this year, and I said that I would propose it when the vote came for the budget. Now, I can't make Raleigh move any faster. So, that's what this is all about, sir.
Do I take it that you'll be making that motion next week?
I will, if you want me to.
Yeah, I'm just not at the meeting as to whether you guys wanna, you know...
I'm ready to make that, if, if it helps Ms. White, I'm ready to make it.
Chairman Page, can I just add one, one other thing that I encourage all the board members to research in preparation for that motion, is without the budget passing, and I know we all know this, keep in mind what's going on with benefits too. It's not just about the percentage that is given as far as salary, because there are some major things going on with benefits, that you're doing all of this because they deserve it, and I'm with you one hundred percent, but if they're not gonna feel it in what they take home because it's washed away in benefits, timing becomes very critical.
Well, I think, you know, personally to the budget, till we have the state budget, know our numbers a lot better, I can't support any major changes, and I certainly can't support a, 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 a percentage. I mean, that just doesn't work for me.
Well, this is how, the, the chairman has already indicated that he is certainly willing to wait until the state budget is finalized, until we know more information on enrollment. Uh, the finance officer has already said that her staff can retroactively go back, it might be a little bit of extra work. She has already said, I can do it. So, I think, you know, if I were you, Mr. Howe, I would ask that, you know, we wait until we know and have a better picture of the total budget. And I'd like to end the conversation just saying that, let's, let's end it right now and wait until we know what the state budget is, because this is one issue, but we heard several other issues that, uh, individual board members might have too.
Well, I think we will end up having...
That's okay, at the time.
It is, I mean, I, I was, the only reason I, I did what I did tonight was to help Ms. White, but I can wait till the state budget comes out, whi, which, the way it looks now, it might be...
We'll have to do a retrospective anyway.
It might be December.
I would just say this point of education, and I think more than already understands this, in, in past, the state has given, you know, two hundred and fifty dollar raises, five hundred dollar raises. You know that that doesn't mean that everybody gets two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, if you only worked fifty percent, you get fifty percent of that, you know. Particularly for hourly employees, I cannot guarantee an hourly employee's gonna get an extra two hundred and fifty dollars, an extra five hundred dollars. Again, just won't, I don't want you to come back and say, well, you know, Susan didn't get two hundred and fifty dollars. I think, you know, we've got algorithms in it, but it's just better for me to put that out there for you, just so we...
We don't make that decision, it's based solely on the number of hours that they work.
That's right, they work eight hours, and every day, they're gonna get two hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever it is.
And the fiscal year has come and gone, and we're into the next fiscal year, and we're still operating without an adopted budget. So we'll continue to operate until we can see here at ten o'clock if you want to. It's not gonna change, so it's gonna operate, and she's gonna keep paying bills until the state adopts a budget, we have our budget. So, no matter what we say or do, it's not gonna change. So we need to live along till she hits the state budget, then we can move on what we wanna do. We'll still pay our bills, right?
And I think if administration needs this, we, we gotta have a training, that's, that is law. If they say we need an A P at that school, they put one there. And then we figure out how to pay for it when the time comes. I don't see it as our job to...
But tonight, you were saying that we're gonna hold it to what?
One point five.
The one point five per what, uh, Ms. White said, so we're gonna hold it to that.
Can you work with that?
I can, like I said, I can't order that.
Guaranteed to it, that's the problem, till we get a state, she can't guarantee it. I think all we can say to best, it's our recommendation to stay...
Yeah, that's what, well, that's what, that's the budget that I've worked up right now shows that.
Standing there right now.
I think we just stay with that, but we, you know...
For any increase in the budget, for any positions or anything, if they wanna do these positions, you gotta take money from somewhere else.
That's correct.
Okay.
Don't leave it.
Okay.
Any others, guys?
I would ask Dr. LaSange to please, I don't care if we're coming up with a halftime person down there, I don't care how we find it.
Absolutely.
Let's, please get a little help there.
Absolutely, I, I think, I think that's a very...
You split it with somebody, please.
That's the budget leaving, she can't...
Okay, thank you.
And what, you do mention too, that athletic director, if I'm not wrong, Mr. Wrong, Mr. Wrong, we got to have athletic director, state law.
Well, train.
Train.
Train, train.
That's been resolved, yeah, we've got it, and then, I think we're near that. We're near, we're near, we're... So, yeah, that, you know, there again, that, that was, they were...
About the last forty-eight.
So, yeah, twenty-two, I think. Was that right, twenty-two?
Take one point five.
Yeah, just, just salary, twenty-two. Thank you for working that out, Mr. Wrong, that helps. So that's why I'm saying, I think...
And that's based on the B R.
And if these two numbers right here, I, I agree, we're gonna, Ms. White will have to do a lot of changes, these numbers hold up. Yeah, we get a hundred, four hundred more kids, I would expect, a lot of things are gonna change. All right, Ms. White, records retention, thick packet, you're gonna do it in five minutes.
Well, yeah, really honestly, I think this is kind of a rubber stamp, really, this is, um, the Archives Division came up with a new records retention schedule, you used to have separate schedules for different type of entity, entities across the state. Now there's one schedule that incorporates all entities. Um, and there were some, um, records retention, um, items that each board needs to decide for themselves, how long they keep certain items. I went ahead and filled those blanks in, so a lot of them don't apply to us, because like I said, it, you know, municipalities, counties, you know, we don't have all the items that are on the list. So really, the board just needs to, um, approve this, particularly the, um, values that I put in myself, um, along with input from, you know, department heads that were really impacted by this. There is nothing substantial that changes about the record retention, this new schedule versus the old schedule that was just exclusive to, um, local ag, agencies.
So this is recommendation of administration as it is?
It is.
Thank you.
Some of them one year, some of them not, or whatever, that's what you got.
Right.
Well, we count, I guess, counting just have seven years across the board, so...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be consistent, you'll see that the years that have already put, been put into the schedule by the Archives Division are not all the same, they're various, it's based on the record.
And you'll need both of them, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Ganning, since we're answering your question earlier, um, the, I don't have second semester data, but first semester for twenty eighteen nineteen, we had students earn one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven career and health funds.
All right, uh, field trips, we got any out of country field trips?
Just, we just had one to the coast, or like, or middle, uh, south of the city, but I don't have that.
Okay. Uh, comments, board members?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we had, uh, a meeting last, uh, winter, and the county commissioners, uh, gave us, uh, some money, uh, to take over, uh, the Little League programs. And, uh, we said we were gonna hire somebody, and my understanding is that person has yet to be hired.
My understanding, but let me correct you, we are not taking over Little League or youth, any youth athletic program. We're not running those programs, we have nothing to do with those organizations, other than they just check, they just do what they were doing, uh, and we verify that they actually are youth organizations, and we add this section to our facilities usage. So I really wanna make sure that's clarified, that we are not running the youth organizations. We get authorized and positioned to be hired to help, uh, Rob Jackson. Uh, I've spoken to Rob about it at the end of the day, I've spoken to him a dozen times, probably pretty close. Uh, he was not happy with any of the applicants that applied, uh, he felt that they were not qualified to, uh, I think he described it as a junkyard dollar, uh, that he did not feel anyone was, so far was qualified that would, uh, be able to do the things and know about the youth organizations. And it also includes, uh, our facilities usage. So, uh, you know, if there's nobody out there, I don't know how we, uh, perhaps we need Rob, Mr. Jackson, come to the meeting, uh, maybe the Cal meeting in September, explain it.
Well, I, maybe superintendent can, can assist and see if we can find somebody to go in that position, uh, because, quite frankly, I don't wanna lose the money.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we, 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 of course, that money was not earmarked for position.
Right, right.
It was, it was to help us with the additional, uh, cost involved, and, and we certainly, uh, the amount of money we get into the commissioners, I wanna thank the commissioners, uh, for, uh, uh, increase, they increased from twenty-five thousand to eighty-five thousand dollars amount of money we were getting from them to help us with the youth, or all the youth organizations, not just the, uh, school-based ones that we're, we're talking about. So, uh, it really showed, uh, their willingness to help us to provide athletic fields for the youth of, of our county. When we have volunteers that can provide youth sports opportunities for our children at our schools, at Union Grove or Harmony or, or Lake Shore or wherever, uh, I certainly feel like it is our duty to provide our, our already existing facilities for the youth. And, uh, so say the five thousand has to pay the light bill, upkeep, and they also do a lot of, uh, our schools receive a lot of support from the youth organizations, thousands of dollars every year is given to our schools, equipment's given to our schools. This is one of the better working, uh, relationships I have seen in, in public schools. I was, I've been very impressed with, with how well we, uh, have in the past worked with them and hopefully now. But I agree, it would be nice, and I thank Mr. Jackson building two schools, he needs some help. Uh, but like you said, he's gotta have somebody to do, he thinks, he can't hold someone's hand and do the job he's, so... But Mr. Johnson, would you speak, talk to, uh, Mr. Jackson, come back with, and let the board know what's going on in that position?
Yes, I've updated you a couple times in your Friday's updates about this, and Mr. Page is exactly right. Rob has posted that position, he has interviewed once, he reposted the position. He does not feel now that he has found the right person. So, our plan of action immediately with the beginning of school is, Mr. Jackson's going to assume those responsibilities. Uh, we can certainly have him come in in September and talk to you, and let you know where he's at at that stage of the game. The other thing is, and I don't wanna do this, but it is another option, um, is we can, we can, um, take Rob out of the interview process and let a committee come in and hire somebody.
Yeah, but you want Rob, Bob, he's got a training person, and he knows what he needs.
Well, he could be involved, yeah, he's had a girlie, and he needs you.
Well, I'm, uh, Rob was in here, was in there working when I, when we were starting our meeting. Uh, uh, he, uh, he's at, his site's at three A M. He's, he's really doing a lot of work, and unfortunately, most of the work, the, the fall season is already over with. He's already had to do, uh, most of those requests, so, uh, you know, it would've been nice to have hired somebody, we should've hired somebody in June, 'cause that's when the requests are coming in. So he's already had to do a lot of the work, but, uh, I agree, uh, and, uh...
At this stage, I'm trusting Rob to, on this, if he wants to go in a different direction, we're certain to do that.
Absolutely not, but, I mean, we need to get it done.
All right, any other, uh, and, and, but let me make one up, now, you gotta remember, this is a one-year trial on this thing. This could easily change next year. I, I, I'm, there's a good chance something else could be done, so I'm not sure where we're standing on that, so just understand that. It's hard, I suppose, I can say, this is positions for the rest of this year. Uh, any other kind of questions?
We had a moment, science, we started, but we, I'm sure most of you know, Kelly, it's Kelly James, the Union Grove lost her father, so just keep Kelly in your prayers and thoughts, um, for her service they just had and whatnot. I don't know that she's back yet or not, but how, how long she'll be out?
Yeah, I think she is back, I saw her Saturday, and she said she's probably be there a few before to come back.
Chairman, I had a couple things that I wanted to, uh, ask the superintendent, and maybe just a second time, uh, he can shoot us a memo on it, but, um, I'm not sure if I read your memo correctly that innovated year-round calendar update, and you called that you had with fellow superintendents. If I was supposed to call you and individually talk to you about that, if you would then let us know how that's coming to end.
Well, it's good enough that you tonight closed session, you did try, so... So you have to lay down on that specific item, or you can come in, uh, one-on-one or in small groups, I think.
Uh, and the, uh, word's getting out, you know, about the clear pricing update. Uh, and have you heard any more on that, and then you were talking about you've been trying to get up with the representatives and meet with them and the superintendent, the Morris, if you can give us an update on that, maybe Monday night also.
Absolutely, uh, yeah, you're right, word is now, our culture class, people are having a hard time believing what they're hearing.
I know, I know.
Well, I...
Well, right there said, two board members don't know what it's about, so, yeah.
Did you hear what you said?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, you know, the, the state treasurer has proposed that there be a different funding stream for all retirees in the state of North Carolina, and the hospitals are bugging it back, and right now, only just a handful are going and said that they would do it, and others are holding steadfast that they're not gonna do it, and that would impact, and if you go to higher level moral who has said they're not gonna participate in it, then we would pay out of pocket, so...
And it's not just retirees, it's all...
Oh, is it all?
State health, it's your national, it's not just retirement.
Actually, if you're on Medicaid, I mean Medicare, it doesn't, it doesn't affect as bad as it does if you're...
It can.
Right, but I did speak with, I spoke with, uh, Senator Sawyer and, uh, John Frey. Uh, it is within the model what the treasurer's doing.
It's...
Uh, they actually, it's, he can do this, there is a lot of concern in Raleigh about it though, so we're probably not... There is a lot of concern in Raleigh about it though, so we're probably not done with it, but, uh, legally, he can, he can do exactly what he did, uh, so the pressure's built. Yeah, yeah.
That's a sad one. Uh, the other thing that I was wanting to bring up, and you, if you would just gather some information, um, I did talk to Jonathan Reddick about the, uh, why the SWIM program was discontinued about twelve years ago, and he, he gave me a lot of good reasons why. I know we all got the, the emails, uh, about that, you know, if there's anything the school system could do about three and state in the SWIM program, and I would just like, Dr. Lucine said it doesn't ever settle down, but I'm gonna say it again, it could settle down, but, you know, if you could just kinda come back with us with some of the reasons why, cost, you know, prohibitive, transportation prohibitive, or just why, or maybe even, as I mentioned to you, you know, some type of summer program to, you know, once again validate our innovative calendar, you know. So if you could just do that, I would appreciate it. Other thing I want to say is a thank you to all the staff, the superintendent, uh, the five schools that I went to this afternoon looked great, uh, teachers looked great, uh, the kids looked great, they were happy, and, um, it, it, the five of them too were wonderful, and I thank y'all for what you, what you've done to get ready for school first.
I heard.
But thank you.
And I acquiesce, uh, very excited teachers, very positive.
I'm very full of digital schools, I'm very full, if you were happy, I just want.
Let's see if we serve it yet, has it?
Do you have anything, sir?
You got it.
Put, put October seventeenth on your calendar, this is gonna be a luncheon at the Unity Center. The Iowa County Bible Association raises the money to pay part of the salaries of our five Bible teachers. And we would love to have you going to Saturday for lunch.
I was hoping you'd go, you can?
The Unity Center.
Yes, sir.
October seventh by eleven-third. Invite, invite folks to go.
Our next meeting is, uh, next Monday night, we'll have a closed session at five o'clock, I'll be here. Any other comments? All right, so I was gonna, I got a much, a second to adjourn any discussion, I'll say, right? I pose no, means adjourn, thank you very much.